Yeah.
Right.
This particular-
City Council, uh, is called to order. And we begin with Recovery Community Coalition Annual Report.
You okay? I gotta get my chair up.
There you go. We're just trying to come up to, um, eye level in these chairs.
All right. Tell us about it.
All right, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council and distinguished staff. Uh, thank you so much for hearing us this evening. Um, this is the second annual report. Last year, uh, our Chair Dale Trees gave you a, uh, year and a half's worth of, uh, of a report to, uh, bring you up to speed on what we've been up to, what we've been up to. Um, so very briefly, then I'll, I'll just remind you of what, uh, those eighteen months' worth of business was, uh, got presented to you. So basically, and we had just come up and running, um, oh, before I do that, I do want to just remind you what is in the resolution as far as what your charge is to the, uh, to the group. Uh, basically, really, it's two things, uh, in addition to bringing the, this annual report to you. For us to identify strategies to incorporate the recovery community so that the smaller community, uh, community into the general community of the city and the, the environs, uh, but then also to identify strategies within the community, within the recovery community itself. So... So, last year, uh, for those eighteen months, what, what we did was we, we had, we had looked at your first charge to us, to, you wanted us to begin with the, uh, with the Boarding Home Ordinance, and we finally, we looked at that, uh, many different ways, and, and last year, we finally reported back to you that, uh, that we had no major changes that we, that we would recommend. So, we, uh, we got to move on beyond that. We identified at that point, uh, three areas that we wanted to further research, and those were, and look into and come up with some strategies, and those were the Public Relations Campaign to, not really a campaign started by us, but to talk and reach out to the, uh, to the media for, uh, education and see if there were ways that we could reduce the negative stigma of the recovery community. Transportation, that had been an issue for a long time, had been identified. Uh, we had some presentations and really did not have any recommendations that came about as far as we were concerned, but more to support what was already ongoing. And, uh, then we also identified all of the services that are already available, that are already funded, uh, and started talking about some strategies on how, how we may be able to pull those together to be more effective and efficient. We didn't come up with any po- any recommendations at that, at that time yet, but you'll hear of some tonight. Uh, we also, uh, had a, a lot of presentations to us during that time as well. The, uh, the accomplishments during that time was that we, we believe that we had really opened up that channel of communication. You'll see in a minute here, we have a, uh, an interdisciplinary team, uh, that, that you had the foresight to put together at that time with the resolution, uh, and, and we really started coming together as, uh, to, to communicate and to not just operate within our silos, if you will, but then also to really, uh, start talking and, uh, and share information, cross-pollinate, if you will. Uh, we had some, uh, outreach to, uh, to those working on the front lines. We believe that we ra- raised awareness in a positive way, and I think this year, we're seeing that, uh, some of that already starting to come out, and we began to, uh, impact, we believe, the overall health, safety, and welfare of the community. I won't read you all the names, sir. We are fourteen members strong, uh, representing all of what is on your screen here, these next two slides, all of our members and the respective positions that we occupy by the wording that's in the, the resolution. Uh, Dale Trees is our Chair, and we do have, uh, four other members of the, of the KRCC, the Recovery Coalition, here this evening, in case there are any questions that I can't, that I can't answer for you. So, what we've done over this, this past year, over the past twelve months, is we have been receiving a lot of presentations, a lot of, uh, research that we've conducted, but then also, we've invited folks in, they have reached out to us, and we've asked them to come speak with us as well. What you see on the, on these next two slides is a summary of those presentations. The underlined ones are the ones that originated from our members ourselves, uh, that, uh, came back. We asked, uh, our members to, to make presentations to us and to let us know what, what they're doing along these lines. We had, uh, presentation from regarding Peterson Health, uh, and ER report, everything that's recovery-related, really, uh, or addiction-related, substance use disorder is the preferred term, actually.
Sabine, you might want to advance your slide.
Thank you. So those are the, that's the, uh, those are the underlined, uh, the underlined ones in this presentation are the, uh, are the ones that we heard, where we heard from our members themselves. The, uh, Kerr County Drug Court, uh, that was an interesting presentation from a lady that's actually moving on, um, so we may be getting in. These are all things that we've just started, that we probably want to get more into as well. Uh, we heard a presentation from the jail. Uh, Starlight Recovery, the Starlight Recovery Center, and, uh, their new, uh, adolescent program, that was really interesting. Uh, Hill Country Crisis Center, uh, that we're still, we're just getting our feet wet on everything that is, uh, that, every time that we have a presentation, we ask the question, "What can we do to help you? What other information are, do we want to look at as well? Uh, and what are the things that we want to do, that we identify as gaps, that we want to further pursue?" The information on the sex trafficking right now, it's, uh, the state as well, is, uh, really looking into some, uh, some strategies there to much better address. We're just now starting to understand the depth and the scope of, of the problem, uh, in the state, but also, but also locally, and what, uh, what can we, what can we do there? Uh, and always, we have a wonderful, um, representative from the high school, Dr. Kendall Young, who, uh, is always keeping us, uh, keeping the young people first and foremost. Uh, we heard a presentation, we're always, uh, still looking at, um, and listening to, watching what Mercy, Mercy Gate Ministries is doing. Uh, we, uh, we're always asking the Police and Fire Department, uh, for data, for additional data. That's really more, not necessarily to identify and say, "Oh, gosh, this is a problem that we need to, that we need to identify," but to make sure that we're keeping our fingers on the pulse there, uh, to have kind of a baseline of information, and then, uh, with, what, when we need to identify, what we need to be paying attention to, and what recommendations we might want to bring out of that. Uh, we did receive some data and some information from the Christian Men's and Women's Job Corps. Uh, the, um, we've also had some, a presentation from, uh, and we're, we're looking into, this is interesting, for, uh, private foundations, and money's that fun, funding that might be available there, uh, versus trying to go through the more formal route of the, of grants. Again, uh, we're, we receive updates from the schools, really, uh, almost on a monthly basis, uh, just, just by having that membership represented on the, on the coalition. Uh, again, we've, uh, we've heard from Police and Fire. Uh, this year, we had the eighty-sixth, uh, Legislative Session going on at the state. We followed that, uh, and, uh, and did actually have a few, some of us wrote letters in support of certain bills that were recovery-related and education-related and mental health-related as well. And, uh, we're constantly having, as I mentioned, the cross-pollination of the, uh, of the members. We have, uh, a lot of information, very, very rich, uh, within our, within our members, within our membership, and those folks are always, we're sharing information with each other, sometimes also, um, sending, sending some, uh, some links and some additional information that we, and through that, we identify some things that we might want to further look into and bring back to the coalition, to the full coalition. So, the, the activities, then, now I'm switching from the presentations to the actual activities that the Kerrville Recovery Coalition either participated in or originated, but most of them, we, we participated in. The Big Texas Rally, that's a statewide rally that we participated in last year. Uh, we had a float in the Holiday Parade in October last year. That was fun putting together, and we did involve, uh, members of the, uh, brand-new to recovery, uh, young in recovery. We don't like to shine too much light on, on folks that are still trying to, uh, get their legs under them, but when we can, involve them in, in activities, uh, we do that as well. But we participated, we sent some members to the Capitol Day to participate in that, again, as part of that legislative session. Uh, we held it, well, we didn't, uh, we participated, participated in the Hill Country Recovery Ri- Rally, uh, that was a cross, cross-disciplinary as well. Uh, one of our members, uh, looked into and then, uh, and then, and then organized the opioid training, uh, for the, from the Office of Rural Health. Uh, we participated, we provided support, we discussed that, um, and, uh, and sent some, some folks there as well. Uh, we tracked and shared key information on those bills that I was talking about. That was, um, almost more of a learning experience there as far as, uh, what, uh, and now we've discovered and have formed some better strategies. I almost wish next year, we had another legislative session that we could, uh, use this new knowledge, but, uh, we have to wait another year. We have reached out to the recovery homes and also to the alumni meetings from the, from the treatment centers around here, have, uh, attended some of those meetings. The big thing that we did this past year was that we created the Communities Project Subcommittee, so I do want to go further into, into, uh, the Communities Project. The way that we identify, and we do have a separate meeting, a separate agenda for the Communities Project, separate and apart from the KRCC agenda. The KRCC, the way that I distinguish it, is a KRCC really focuses on your first charge, which is, "How do we better integrate the recovery community into the general community?" The Communities Project focuses on, within the recovery community itself, uh, and that's where we've done, uh, some exciting things, I think. Uh, so the his, brief history quickly is that, um, we became aware of that opportunity there. There was some funding, not for us, but there was some funding for just the, the whole nature of raising awareness for certain communities, and we were one of those communities that participated in this. Uh, so we didn't, it's not that we received any funding, it's just that the, uh, but we did receive, um, some, some pointers and some training on, uh, how to, how to do this and how, uh, how we can raise awareness in a positive way. So, we did identify a few projects as a part of that, that is, that, these are ongoing. Uh, we, we published and distributed a resource guide. That is, that has been actually, uh, talked about. Yes, thank you.
Pass it down, y'all will love seeing that.
Those are short of, un- un- until we have a, um, a one-stop shop, and I'll talk about that in a minute here, um, there is a need for people to, it, it is very, very complex what each individual within, that, that is in recovery, uh, or should be in recovery or is new to recovery, um, it's very difficult to navigate those, uh, through the services that, that are, that already exist. So, um, so what we've done in the interim is created this resource guide for folks that we can, that, where that can be available, that we hand to folks, folks that are, that have no idea of where to get started and how to get started as far as their needs, to address their needs, as it's concerned. So that's, that's kind of the, the first step there. Uh, I believe that we have continued to elevate, uh, awareness. We have, uh, I believe, strengthened the relationships among services, and even if you just attend one of the meetings that we ha- that we have, you can see, we, we have, we have become a really cohesive, cohesive team. We have facilitated across-communication and, uh, and provided additional interdisciplinary education, constantly sending each other interesting articles, interesting, uh, new, new developments that are coming up related to recovery. And, uh, and we, and we developed a community survey. We're still, we're tr- still trying to get that out there to gauge the need for that, for a community center. It's probably the most, um, the, the, the most interesting thing, I think, that, that we've, uh, that we're starting to talk about. There has been, over the, over the, probably the past couple of decades, just talk behind the scenes that this, that this is needed, but that's just among, that's just within the, the folks that are in the profession. However, now, what we're trying to do is gauge in the community itself, gauge, uh, what the level of awareness is, what the perceived need is, and, and more specifically, what, what, what kind of services do we, do we need? So that is, uh, so that is an idea that has been, that has been around for a while. Now, we're really kind of testing it out in the, in the community. So what we'd like to do, and as part of our charge, uh, it, back to you, is to communicate what our ideas, desires, and plans are. That's from the, that's from the resolution, is to continue to review those identified gaps. We, over the past two and a half years, we've identified some gaps we would like to continue and bring those back. Um, we've started to talk about them already, exploring the potential for that Communities Project, uh, breaking away, potentially, if we, if we keep going along the lines of, of exploring the center idea, uh, that maybe one of these days, the Communities Project Team will break away and look at becoming its own nonprofit, supported by the KRCC, but not, but no longer being part of the, part of the, the City Board that advises, advises you. Researching opportunities to address homelessness, we've already started talking about that, um, and we would like to continue, keep that on the agenda and keep talking about that. Research and explore those gaps and opportunities for unfunded individuals. So, I was talking about, we already have a lot of services and some things that are available, but there are some unfunded gaps that we would like to further explore as well. Homelessness, obviously, being one of those, but maybe some others. Continue to research and talk about the, uh, sex trafficking. And continue, looking for, identifying opportunities for pub- public education. Public education was the number-one priority in our Communities Project, by the way. When we had our initial meetings, we had much greater attendance from the general community, uh, that is always welcome to attend, well, obviously, they're always welcome to attend anyway, uh, but we originally had encouraged, and we do have other people from the community that are not on the KRCC that are very active in Communities Project, so we would like to, uh, continue in that. And public education was the number-one priority identified by, by a lot of folks, and not just, not just folks from the, uh, Kerrville Recovery Coalition. Um, continue with, uh, we have had some pro- positive press releases and, and news articles. I believe there's one coming up in a couple of days here, coming out in a couple of days. And I'll tell you about that. Exploring the funding and relationship with, uh, with those private foundations, that was really interesting. And, uh, strengthening the, the county jail and the, uh, the, with the Sheriff Department, the education community and, and cross-support there. We'd like to look at some additional events. Uh, the Night of Remembrance, that's this coming Saturday. Uh, this will be the first time that this ci- this city is participating in this international Night of Remembrance, and it's, and it's basically to, uh, not just to increase awareness of, of the, the very real problem of, of overdoses, um, but also that, that's a night that, that across the world, there are other communities that are holding candlelight vigils and having some other events as well, and we will be participating in that. So that's this Saturday, uh, at First Baptist, First Baptist Church, and, uh, it'll start at seven o'clock, and then the, the actual candlelight is going to be at eight o'clock. So we'll have, uh, we'll have presentations, from there speaking that evening, and also, um, some speakers that have lost loved ones, loved ones to overdose. Recovery Month is in September, is this, uh, the week after that. Um, we, we had really good, uh, attention and some good participation in our rally. We would like to continue that, possibly as an annual event. We've, uh, kicked around, pun intended, uh, sports competition potential, uh, a fun run, and pop-up Sober Pro events. And just, uh, just tying all that together, uh, so in summary, so those are, those are the, these are the main areas that we would like to continue our, our efforts. That's all I have for you.
Sabine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've been very impressed by the Coalition. Uh, I think there is, uh, a level of commitment and research, uh, really looking at what the resources are that can meet needs, and one of the things, thoughts I had as, as you talked was that, um, I think you would be a great resource for people writing grants. Now, like the Community Center, you may be, like, Crisis Council picks up, you know, one part, but you've got info, you've got research, perspective, never really go into a grant, and, uh, but anyway, that's just, that's just one thing. But, um, I've, I've got a couple of questions for you. What are you most encouraged by in this process?
What am I most encouraged by? Um, well, I, I don't know how many of you know this, but, um, prior to, um, when, when the Coalition was first formed, I actually attended the meetings, and then, um, and then, for a short period of time, um, I was, I was also on the city side to attend those meetings, and then, and now, so I've, I've been, I've been coming to these meetings the whole time. What I'm the most impressed by is how much momentum it's gained, and, and, and the, and the richness of the, of the resources of the people on the, on the, um, on the Coalition. It was, it was kind of slow-going at first, but it's really gathered in, and I would say, and I brag about this a lot to, to some of my cohorts in, in other areas, this, this is, this is a pretty unique thing that you have created here. There aren't a whole lot of coalitions like this that advise their city councils, and it, it's, it, that was amazing for me to find out or to realize, because we constantly hearing about, about the crisis that we're in, um, either Sixty Minutes or, or the news, um, that, that there are so few cities that are, that are really paying attention on the city side. You do have some, uh, police departments and fire departments that, that are obviously involved, but for there to be a real opportunity to, uh, to not just use, uh, those resources that are really not that well geared toward meeting recovery needs, that, so I think that there is a really, a real opportunity, and there's, that, that's what is impressing me the most, and it's, it's also-
Good, good, all right. Anybody else?
I had a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
So, back on one of the first pages, you had said outreach to those working on the front lines of potential conflict points. Could you give me an example of, um, how you outreach to them and how it's been working? Do you have events where there's a common theme or a common reason why, uh, it would draw a lot of people, and then you're able to? I was just curious.
Uh, well, I'll, I'll give you a recent example, um, is, uh, this Night of Remembrance that we're, that we're holding. Um, we, we sent, uh, information to the owners of their recovery homes. We do have representation for the female, uh, sober homes here. Uh, we unfortunately do not yet have, uh, we have a gap right there. We have, uh, one, one area that's not covered, uh, but, but we reached out to all of the, the homeowners and, uh, invited them to participate in this Night of Remembrance, and that is, again, it's, it's, it's bringing the folks, what we really want to address ultimately from a Communities Project standpoint, is the boots on the ground. How do we reach the boots on the ground, and how do we ultimately reach-
A good place.
-the person that, that we want to be reaching and want to help become a productive member of the, of the community.
And then just one other quick question was, um, you said you get updates on the schools. I was curious, is, can you share what kind of specific information that is? Is it, um, because, uh, my interest is the homeless, and of course, there are, uh, obviously high school students who are on the verge of being unsheltered, so that's just my interest. But I was wondering, do you get any of that information? Is, or is it just, uh, dependency-related and has- It's as it might, I guess, at-risk students? And how it would, so I, I was just curious if it had, if it would help me and what I'm trying to do as far as count, or keep a count, or keep an accurate count on our high school at-risk? And my, like I said, my daily work is the homeless feature of it, not so much-
Ken, if you, if you go to the podium, if you go to the podium.
Sorry, Dr. Young.
Okay. Hello, good afternoon. Um, we have to keep an accurate count of that for homelessness for the McKinney-Vento Act.
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to speak up.
So, we, we keep an accurate count of that. We have to code them, they're at risk, uh, but it's also related to our Title I funding, which we receive from the federal government to meet the needs of our Title I, and most of our schools are Title I, but one of the aspects of, for high school coding is that they are coded homeless, and those students receive, you know, funding for different kinds of things like that tax, and, um, and if they need to take college, uh, tests, SAT, ACT, pay for college, whatever, not just pay for college-
Well, maybe I could call you.
-but pay for apply. Um, but we have an accurate count of our students who are couch surfing, who don't live with their parents, or unaccompanied minors. But in terms of what I report back to the KRCC is our drug prevention efforts, because I have a, a Student Advisory Council that comes up with the activities that we're gonna do to meet the needs of students, to help them not vape and help them not, um, you know, not even start with drugs. And then last year, we implemented our, um, student drug testing program, and so we're in the second year of implementation on that. That's one aspect of prevention, so that's what I report back-
So maybe I could be in touch with you on a quarterly basis or something, just to see if those numbers are increasing, um, because I did reach out to the actual principals, but maybe perhaps you're, you're like the best place to go for the-
Yes.
-the big picture.
Yeah, because it's reported to PMS and TEA, and it's, uh, public information, and so you can track it over years, I mean, and you will see that our Title I has increased, um, our federal funding, and that relates to economic hardships-
Right.
-homelessness, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I was just curious, what, uh, where do you get your funds now? Do you have any money to work with?
We're, we're, we're not a program. We're, we're an advisory board.
Just advisory, okay, so-
Yes, ma'am.
So, everything you do is just strictly, you set it up without?
There, there's, well, uh, most of, most of what we do is, there, there's really no, no funding required. We need meeting space, and that meeting space is here, because we're your board. Once in a while, look, for instance, this coming weekend, uh, we will have, we will have some flags, and we will have some vigil candles that we needed to fund. Uh, there was actually a little bit of money left over from a while back when, uh, when there was a Recovery Coalition that was more county, county-wide, where you had some representatives that, that met, those folks met for a while, but, and, and raised a little bit of money. Uh, that money is still, uh, a little bit used there, but for the most part, there's really no funding needed.
No, not, not needed, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's true. Uh, Sabine, I was gonna say, you missed, you missed an opportunity. Wouldn't Judy raise that, to, to do and ask for some funding, but, anyway. Okay, uh, thank you very much.
Yes.
You got, you got a que- okay, wait.
I have to give credit.
We knew you would want to speak, Dale.
Knew I was gonna speak.
Dale Trees, Chair of the Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition. The funding of what we've already done for, like, the Hill Country Recovery Rally we did earlier this year, the upcoming event this weekend, the people of our community have come together. The persons in recovery have come together and donated their time, their resources, some dollars, that's the recovery homes themselves, uh, some of us in our, in our employment with our, uh, our, like, our treatment facilities are on board with this, they're supportive of, so some of the actual dollars are coming from, uh, our community who are in recovery, and then some are just donated along the way, those who are participating. So it's not that we're just, like, walking around going, "Put some money in the bag." It's, we do have people who are committed to support this in that manner, and they also are the same ones who are showing up at our resource tables, they're providing the snacks and the, the, the refreshments and such, and, uh, what you've already experienced, for those of you who were with us at the Hill Country Rally, uh, Recovery Rally, as far as what we'll be experiencing this next weekend, so.
Thank you.
I think Councilman Clarkson has a question.
Um, well, I just wanted to thank all of you for your commitment-
Um, well, I just wanted to thank all of you for your commitment to doing this. And I've had the pleasure of knowing you, um, or meeting you at least. And I just wanted to say that, I can tell that you're very dedicated and, um, really enjoyed the Recovery Rally. Um, and I love this. I, I, I will tell y'all that I actually, um, bef, back in April, I think, I, I had met Dale and I called him up just with a, with a, someone I knew and, and an immediate concern. And I just love this idea and I thank you for being, just wanna thank you publicly for being available to me and helping me through what was a, you know, mini crisis. Yes. And so I just wanna thank everybody. And I do have one question. Um, I would love, first of all, to see, now that you've started gathering all this data, it'd be great to see, um, what information you're gathering, kind of following Delane's idea. Just, you know, when you're talking about gathering information on homeless and, and sex trafficking. And I'd be curious in the gaps that you identify, I love that you're thinking through that way. I don't know when or how, but I'd, I'd be very interested in just hearing more about what you're, what you're learning along the way.
And we, we, we do know that both the trafficking, sex trafficking and, and homelessness and the substance use disorder, mental health issues all go together.
Yeah.
They're interlaced. And that's why we've become, taken it on to take a look at that. And thank you for your support and, uh, for the city for helping us make that, uh, resource guide.
Yeah, I love this.
Good, alright. Okay.
It was bound to happen, Dale.
Are we, are we going to move on to the procedures presentation? Okay, alright.
You think, yeah.
Thank you all of you.
If, for something very exciting, you can stay as a city attorney, talks to us about our procedures of a council and
How we get to act.
What we do and don't do. So, whatever.
But it's also okay if you leave.
Yes, it is. You may have a nail appointment or something.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys?
These, I consider these rules to be in your laps. Uh, I made changes from your last meeting, your workshop. I, I think we talked for, you know, it may have been three or four hours.
Yeah.
Um, you all made changes. I gave you the red line version and, um, I haven't heard very much from anyone except for now the mayor.
Alright, okay. Um, Rule 3.1. Says the preferred method for a council member seeking to add an item to a future agenda is to do so at a regular meeting under future agenda items. Okay, now, am I missing something? So one council member can add.
Right, and the, the theory, the theory is there. And, and I, I like that language. I don't know, I think maybe one of y'all, maybe.
Yeah, I'm not objecting to the language.
Preferred method is, I think, a good way to put that. Because certainly you all, every regular meeting, you all have a, uh, an item, an actual item that talks about, hey, you all want any future agenda items. And that's the, I think that is a good preferred method for you all to consider future, um, agenda items.
I was looking at that too. Are you meaning that one, only you're saying the consent versus one person says this and it's done? Or versus the consensus or voting?
My concern is, um, you know, if, if that is not supported on council, then it's a waste of time. And so should it include, you know, the person makes the, the request and then there's a council member that joins?
Well, that's certainly up to council. And there, there are a few places within your rules that talk about, um, and I'm, I'm trying, I was trying to look for it. I couldn't find it off the top of my head. Where you all discuss things and if there's consensus, you just move on. If there's not, someone makes a motion and, and you, you deal with it that way. So it's kinda like a.
I thought I saw that in there somewhere.
That's not in there for.
Not 3.1.
Right, but it is, it is in a couple of other rules. So you might wanna drop that in if that's, if that's a concern.
I, I would like that.
I like that too.
Yeah, I would like it just because I think it gives a certain protection against a rogue councilor if we ever have one again.
So could you tell me again what you want added?
What I want added is if, 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 like for instance, if you, in the future agenda items request, I want this on the agenda of a future council meeting. Then it would be a matter of including, you know, if that is endorsed by another council member.
And that's what it says, in such request shall include the support of another council.
That's on the, that's on the written request.
Okay, but that's outside of a regular meeting.
That's via email, okay.
So, I'm sorry, here, here's that language I was referring to. It's in 5.1, but it's not only in 5.1A, it's in, it's in at least another place. So time limitations, and in this case, putting an item on the agenda, uh, you know, you may cause that to occur by consensus of council or pursuant to majority vote. And so the, the thought there is, uh, someone requests an item for a future agenda. You look around, mayor, uh, if, if there's consensus, you move on. You know, everyone nods, you move on. If not, there might be discussion of that item and it would be limited to just placement of that item on the next agenda and you actually could take a motion.
You vote.
And have a vote.
Alright, would that cover this other, uh, 3.1?
I, I think, I mean, I could use that language there and, and build that in for sure.
I would like to see that. Any objection to that?
No, it clarifies it a little bit more, you're right.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I will build that in.
Okay, I got another one on 3.4. Your box out to the right.
Yes.
I, I said yes. Uh, we may want to define who may make a request and how the process then works.
Well, we took out, so you may not be reading from the latest version. So I, I took out that first sentence.
Yeah.
So now 3.4 reads as follows. When a council member will be absent from a meeting, the council member may request that an item may, item not be included in such request shall not be unreasonably denied.
Okay, okay. Right, I didn't, I don't have a whole bunch, but on 4.4, given what you're saying there, I would like to add a sentence. The mayor shall be obeyed.
I'm looking for consensus.
Define obeyed. Does anybody wanna make that motion?
I still want.
Does that mean nodding our heads?
Clarify this thing.
I think I object.
Yeah, that word is very servant. I don't hear emotion.
Exactly, right.
Alright, let me have one more. 5.1, uh, Part A. It did say the public, now it says visitors. To me, visitors sounds a little lower than citizens or public. Am I wrong?
That's up to you. I just tried to align that term with the way it was used in previous sections. And so that's, that's all I've done there.
It, it may not be, it could not, it's possible it wouldn't be a citizen. It could be somebody from outside this city.
If you use it elsewhere than, that, that's, that's fine.
Or you could, can't you do both of them? The public slash visitors.
Visitors covers both of them.
I don't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more. On 7.5, council attendance at board meetings. Let me see, a council member may attend a board or commission meeting in their capacity as a council member, but should not participate, oh, should not participate in the discussion of a board meeting. My, my question there is, and I've actually experienced this, where the, the chairman of that board or committee asks me a question. So you may speak if asked by the chairman?
Well, it doesn't say that. And so if you want to add that, that's an exception.
Mark, what, what's your perception?
At one point, I think y'all had that and then you took it back out.
I think, I think I remember, if I remember the discussion, it was that, um, those kind of items could be directed to staff. Um, if they were asking for something that may be interpreted as a council position, that we should probably be careful not to speak or act the way they would.
My recollection was that we might carry undue weight in the discussion and not be, you know, as a representation of city council.
Yeah. However, last year, the same time last year, the 2050 P&amp;Z invited us to come speak at their meeting. It wasn't a matter of weighing in, but we had all been so involved in the 2050 plan over the last nine months. It was a, it was a question we all had. Could we, you know, technically, you know, go to the podium and speak or should we not? But they had invited us in advance to please at least be there, all of us. And if we felt inclined, and I think the mayor spoke and I think I might've even spoke. And then we all wondered if we did the wrong thing.
That was, that was, cause I signed up to speak and not knowing that I should, so.
And it was just a one time, I think it was a unique situation where, um, we had all been working so hard as committees and steering committees and we, we, we were all kinda tied together. It wasn't like P&amp;Z was doing this and then we were entering in something they had been working on. We had all been, and we were just really more support. They had, you know, cause we were about to vote on it at our final council meeting. They said, could you just give us your opinion about your support of what we've been doing for the last nine months? Which it really, I thought it was a positive thing. However, we just wanna make sure we aren't breaking any policy or rules.
Well.
We wanna have it in there at all, I.
Well, certainly there's gonna be an exception. I, I can't recall that specific instance, um, whether that was also posted as a council meeting. And so that, that would be different, that would be an exception.
Right.
But if you wanna clarify this language here, it, it's clear here, you know, you should not attend meetings and participate.
Right.
Um, unless you have some sort of, uh, personal interest in it. So i- if you wanna, you know, create an exception or clarify it, then by all means, now's the time to do that.
I think it's.
What, what are you saying?
I like it the way it is. I think it's better not to.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's just very clear and.
Well, we were all kind of feeling awkward even that night. Uh, so I, you're probably right.
Alright, okay, okay. Thank you for your good work.
Yes.
Okay, if you don't wanna see this again, then we're gonna need a motion to approve with these changes. And I'll make the changes and issue a final draft and.
What are we doing on 5.1 exactly? I don't, I don't, didn't feel like we.
I didn't know anything for 5.1.
We, are we going to leave it as visitors?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, I didn't.
If you choose visitors in other places, they, then that might get it done.
Your objection to the word visitor is?
I thought it, the, the term visitor is, is, is kind of lower than citizen or whatever. But if we're clear, you know, if that's clear, then let's leave it.
So then the only really major change or not major change would be a draft to be in 3.1?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the one we're gonna add there.
Yeah, I, I know we're gonna vote, but I will say, I am crushed that you did not accept my recommendation.
Mr. Hayes, would you just summarize again from.
Now you know what you're dealing with.
The change for 3.1 was.
Okay, so for 3.1, um, I will clarify that the, you know, after the preferred method for a council member seeking to add an item to a future agenda is to do so at a regular meeting under, under future agenda items, uh, pursuant to consensus or by motion. And that'll cover, I mean, again, that, that phrase is in a couple of other places.
Well, the only, the only thing I wonder about that is if we want to align it with the email? We only need two members versus a majority, um, of members. So I would think, I don't know. Do we wanna hold to the same standard? If you're, if you are wanting to add an agenda item, then you need the support of one other council member.
I've, I've got some concern over this. So can I?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but I think in examples, can you give me an example? So if we're in a city council meeting and an item comes up and I say, I would like, when we get to the point to be placed on future agendas, and I say, I would like to have that item placed on a future agenda in the next three weeks or four weeks for future discussion, and no other council member seconds that, then it will not be placed on that agenda.
No, well, I think it's, it's a little bit simpler than that, at least initially. I think you, just like you all have been doing it, I'd like this to be on an item for, as an item for future agenda. And the mayor kinda doesn't hear, you know, any sort of pushback or, you know, comment. And, and we mark it down and it's on an, it's on an agenda. Now, at that time, it would give someone the opportunity to say, mayor, I, I disagree with that. And then consensus would be broken. And if you wanted it on an agenda, then you would say, mayor, then I'd like to make a motion and vote.
Okay, so I don't have to say, I need a second for my.
Not, not initially, that, and that's how, uh, a couple of the other rules work as well.
Okay, that's fine.
And, and, and let me say, this, this is out of the experience of particularly one member of the council, but sometimes two, putting things on the agenda that had.
That were repeated.
Weight of getting at somebody or something. Uh, at the same time, running out of the very last minute, uh, to the city secretary to add something to the agenda. And you get the venue, you're like, oh, man.
I understand that. And, but I also think it's a two-edged sword. You, you, the other side shouldn't get to wield it more than one side. Uh, that if there's something that's important to me, that I think should be on a future agenda. And, and I'm fine with the way that Mr. Hayes explained it, that, you know, there needs to, as long as nobody disagrees and says, no, I don't think we need that on there. And then it comes down to a consensus.
Yeah.
And I'm fine with that.
And my, and my, and my question is just about consistency. Because if what we're saying is if we prefer it to be on and at a regular council meeting on future agenda items and we're saying we need consensus or a majority, but if we're also saying that, and am I, am I remembering this correctly? That either in, in an email, you have to have one co-sponsoring member. So that's different. So if I were to email and just get one other person, I'm good. But if I were to put it on future agenda items, it sounds like you're saying consensus. So that doesn't seem equal to me.
If they're different, yeah.
So it's, yeah, it doesn't require consensus, does it?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Didn't require consensus.
That's what we were gonna add.
In Mr. Cochran's example, no. I mean, he, he would, he would say, I'd like this to be on an agenda and there'd probably be a little bit of a pause.
But if Kim says, I don't think it should be?
Oh, then, then if you wanted to press the issue, you would say, I, and I make a motion that I'd like this on the agenda or, you know.
Well, that's where, that's where I'm saying, if you do that, then.
If I send, if I, if I talk to Kim and say, hey, Kim, let's make a motion.
Or outside of a meeting?
Let's, let's send an email that says we'd like that.
Oh, yeah, then that gets on.
Then it's on.
And, and I don't know, I mean, you all have to decide that. There's a difference between, I mean, i- in, in a meeting, everyone sees what's coming next. And whereas outside of a meeting, then is it, i- is there an issue with one council member saying, I'd like this item on the next agenda? And it might be, you know, you might have enough time to do that in 10 days. And then it becomes, it's just on the agenda.
And I guess the other side of that is if, if it went to consensus and it's a 3-2 vote, I can still come out next week and send an email with the other person that's in agreement with me and we can still get it on the agenda.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. No, that's what I'm saying, it's not the same thing.
Yeah.
Consensus means or implies majority. Um, and email requires two. So that's, you get it, you know.
Yeah, and I, I wasn't asking for consensus. I was asking for one other person to endorse it.
At the meeting.
As in an email.
At, at the meeting.
That's up to, that's up to y'all. I, you know. To be consistent though, to be consistent and avoid the question that you raised though, you could do the same way that you do as far as calling a special meeting. Somebody has, just advises me or advises city secretary, I want this on the agenda outside of a meeting, then I, we gotta figure out if the majority is agreeable to that.
Just need two, not a majority.
Well, no, I'm saying you can change it so that it's consistent with what happens in a, a meeting unless.
That's 2-2, rule number 2-2.
I like the 2 though. I like the two though.
The special meeting shall be called by the city secretary upon.
Fair, what a situation that you're gonna face and I'm not sure it's that.
Yes, but we used to face it a whole lot more.
It can be, we've, we've definitely learned that, a lot of these things can be.
But what, but Bill, I mean, and I understand what you're saying, but even in that situation with our, with the current rules that we're writing. If a council member said to his other council member, hey, I want this on the agenda, would you agree with me? Then it's gonna get on the agenda.
Right, right, yeah.
So.
You wouldn't wanna be able to do that in either form, right?
I, I, I think effectively you will unless, if I state, I'd like for this to be on a future agenda. Unless the mayor or one of the other council members says, I don't want it on there. And then we'd call for a motion.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd vote and even if it failed, I could still submit an email request to the city manager or the city secretary.
With the support of one other person.
With a supporting council member and still get that put on a future agenda item.
You know, and I, I, I think in that case, I think it still goes toward the, the preferred method is you raised it in an open meeting. Your colleagues heard it, you might not, you didn't win the day. But now a- as, as a minority, you know, on the minority side of that issue, you then, and it, and the rules talk about, you know, protection of minority rights here. You have a right with one other council member to get that on an agenda and, and, in, in.
Which I think is the way it should be.
Right, and in a sense of fairness, then they, they at least know it's, it's, it's coming and.
Out there.
Yeah.
There's a, maybe perhaps a little.
And I, I, you know, I've, I've seen some items on the agenda that not all council was really fired up about. But in, in most times, you know, it, it doesn't happen. There, there's always a consensus of council, at least there's an understanding.
I know I wasn't here for some of these situations. I'm just concerned about the integrity of it.
Sure.
I mean, just don't wanna shut people down because you can. And I think that's something that we really need to be sensitive to, even if we don't agree with them.
Well, I, what, what is, I guess I'll come back to what I was saying, what's, what's the harm in saying if we, if we're gonna allow it in this form? Why don't we allow it in this form? I guess is my question.
Effectively it is.
It is, yeah. But because.
But I mean, the numbers, the numbers, either if I sit here at council, I need, I need, and it codes to vote, I need three people. I need a majority.
Actually, you don't need any.
Only if someone doesn't agree, if someone doesn't.
Right, but at that point, majority.
There's the lighter way, which is the consensus way where no one objects, it's on the agenda. And that pretty much says all of us have agreed to allow.
Personally, would, if, if I brought an item up and Bill descended and said, I don't think that's an item and it voted down three to two, I might reconsider whether I wanna put it on the agenda or not.
Well, that's right.
That's, yeah.
You know.
Okay.
You know, you kinda saw the writing on the wall.
Yeah.
Or you need to come back and prepare it in a different way or.
Yeah, have to approach it differently.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thing else.
Well, given our time and need to go into executive session, I assume this is incomplete and you'll get back to us.
Really, okay, well, that's up to y'all.
Can we amend this and, and pass it with, with the change now? Or do we need to have?
The only change, right, and going back.
I would make a motion to just make that one change.
I wanna make sure I'm, I'm clear on what he's changing.
Um, the only change I'm making is adding that phrase to, uh, Rule 3.1.
That we just talked about.
About consensus or majority vote.
We.
Yeah, or motion.
Okay.
You wanna make it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, for item 3.1. I want to add the language pursuant to consensus of council or pursuant to majority vote, which is the way it read, I believe in the other one. Um, and to add that, see, after the sentence that ends under future agenda items.
Okay.
Does that work as a motion?
I'll second that.
Add that plus you wanna adopt the rules.
Right, and to adopt the rest of the rules as they've been presented. All in favor?
Okay, we've got a motion second. Uh, all in favor with raised hand? Okay, okay. Alright.
Motion to go.
Uh, we're going to executive session related to Sections 5.51, point 071.
We need to get a motion.
Okay.
Oh, we're going upstairs, mayor.
We need a motion and a second and a vote.
Motion, oh, you're right, okay. Uh, moving, going to executive session by Section 5.51071.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay.
Do we need any paperwork or just ears and?
Oh.
Yeah, okay.
Paper we need?
The clothespin? Okay, well, you know, you can always get a discussion.
That's a good point.